Talking about grounds.
There, right now. Look and see. Now it stops streaming. Then it starts streaming.
It shows us moving.
But it might be a delayed reaction.
Yeah, it's not recording. Now it's recording. Okay, let's try that now.
Okay. Desi's computer wasn't even getting caught at the remote device.
I know. Well, it is a delayed reaction. It's really weird. Because I can, I can get back over to my office after the meetings is over and I still look like I'm sitting here. Yeah, that's weird.
Where's your necklace? Where's your necklace? Those coins.
Well, I don't know. Just costume jewelry. One has a cross on it.
And it says we couldn't get it to work. So when everybody wants to look at that one, not at work.
I just thought it was cool because it had three on it.
Yeah. I got, I got these for Christmas. For my son. He ran down about one of those little kids. It's a little, it's as nice as mine.
That's funny.
Yeah. And it's, it's black and it's got purple pin stripes. And it's got a, a purple, one of those ribbons for pancreatic cancer. Queen Maria.
Oh, neat.
Oh, she was so pretty.
Mercy. Josie?
Josie was.
I think she's already been there.
I have a pink hat. You have a piece of it.
No.
Okay.
It's that, it's over the paperclip.
These are Desi highlights. If you wanted to, like your district. Their, that's your account summary. It's like saying, must've had a good time during the weekend. He's double parked over here in somebody's yard or...
Double parked?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't pick up two. Kind of like that.
It's needed.
My, my argument, except mine was not really on it, so it's sad.
Okay, I make a motion to approve purchase orders and travel claims.
One second.
Yes, move by executive to approve the payment of purchase orders and travel claims. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion very unanimous.
I make a motion to approve blanket.
Green. Okay, the purchase orders are ready.
That's awesome.
Yes, move by executive to approve the blanket purchase orders. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All ayes, motion very unanimous.
Tubulation of the 2018 six month. You should have that in your packet. And she probably always been in. Max, did you hear that? She, you should have a copy of the six month tabulation in the packet.
Okay.
And Cindy highlighted everything that was the lowest in yellow.
I will check that out later.
No, she had a lot of yours.
She had mine.
She had a lot of yours.
Well, maybe she thought it was copy and it didn't.
Oh, yeah.
I bet she did.
Yellow one.
Yeah, yellow one, yeah.
Okay, well, anyway. Did you have you anywhere? Or do you want to look at it first and...
Well, I didn't see anything, but I looked earlier about colored, so I...
Yeah. Then you might ever email it to us and we can print it out or something because I think you dealt with office.
Okay.
Kevin Lang asked me if there's two bids that are the same. And he asked me if we was going to award one or the other. And I said, well, if they're exactly the same, we'll probably award to both. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I would think so because it's going to also depend on what, if you're buying a load, you know, you've got to figure out what's the cheapest when you add them all together.
Yes, a lot of times.
Because of delivery fees and all that stuff goes into effect. So... Availability and a whole lot of things.
We need a motion to, um, accept the bid, the tabulation, the bid tabulation.
I make a motion to accept the, accept this bid and tabulation.
One second.
Yes, move by executive to accept the bid 2018 tabulation, six month bid material for January 1, 2019 to June 30, 2019. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes, motion very unanimous. We have a notice to bid 2018 for a delivery of digital ballot cards.
Yeah.
Is it sent to our normal vendors, I guess?
Yeah, it's just, it's just the normal yearly.
Yeah, yeah, right, annual.
Annual. We have a motion to drop the bids.
I make a motion to drop the bids. One second.
Yes, move by executive to submit bid 2018 for bids for digital ballots. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes, motion very unanimous. Okay, uh, Max, do you have a chance to look at the, the business?
Yes, I, I would.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. On page 11. Max, did you bring your copy?
No, I did not. Go ahead. Thank you, thank you.
Page, this is the original, if you, I know you haven't looked at it probably. On page 11, item D on the sales tax. It says that the tax was renewed, it talks about the 1% sales tax for the emergency, uh, use. And it says, uh, the voters of Grant County approved a 1% sales tax. And then the next sentence is this tax was renewed for an additional 10 years for 1 and 1/4% to include the Grant County fairgrounds. I think that needs to be reworded because it makes it sound like that the Grant County fairgrounds participated in that equally and they did not. So I think we need to say.
At the beginning, right?
Yeah, it says, we renewed the, that was actually two votes. So you can't make that into one sentence because the, the quarter percent for the fairgrounds was not renewed. It was the first time, I believe. So we need, that sentence needs to be revised. It's not renewed. That sentence needs to be revised. And then my second question is that the, the next paragraph following that says the voters of Grant County approved a 1 and 1/4% excise tax for grant tourism for 20 years. I'd like to know how much is in that account. I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out in this deal. I think it was a copy and paste issue. I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
I do realize that, yeah.
We're limited on 2%.
Yeah, we don't know, it's not. So anyway, I think that needs to be redone. Okay. All right. And will we be able to, you think, approve it next week since it's been two months late? Um, we get it back in, in the order, for sure. Well, you know you will. Okay. That works. Do you have any questions, ma'am?
No, I, I had seen this deal here about that, this, this, uh, this tax too, but I wasn't sure, you know, what that meant.
I'd love for people to come to our county, but I don't think they're going to.
Yeah, well, I would love to, you know, we, we've tried, well, there's been a couple things presented that would draw people to our county, but we had opposition to some things. So I understand. And what do we have here? You know, we're agriculture-based. We have a good school system. We have a good.
Hunting. Hunting, hunting is a big draw, but it takes landowners to.
And it takes birds. We, we have.
Deer, birds.
We haven't had a partnership.
Yeah, but fessits.
Fessits have been down this year. Quail are down. And, you know, there's been some good deer hunted, but, you know, you get into, if you're not in the right group, you're not going to get into that.
Yeah, this is a copy paste problem, so I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, that's okay.
You didn't have anything else, though?
No, no. The only, the only other thing that, you know, when we was talking about, uh, you're basically making a statement here, right?
We're trying to give an overview of the financials of the county. It was some explanation as to how we derive our revenue. And so, I mean, it's a condensed version. It's not going to be the statute itself. It's just a condensed version like the, like the auditors used to do. And, but now they're not doing those financial statements anymore. They're just allowing us to.
So, so by us making this statement here, we're not tying ourselves to just this?
No, the, the, like she said, the auditors used to do this and they didn't pass that. So that's why she said she's copy and paste and they give them all the paragraphs. And she picks what's relevant. One other question, I guess, would be on that same page 11, the, and the liability, the paragraph right before sales tax where it says we're defendants in various lawsuits, although the outcome of these lawsuits is not presently determined. In management's opinion, the resolution of these matters will not have a material adverse effect on the financial condition of the town. So you, you don't think the issue with the wind farms is going to impact us if we, if they take us to, to suit on that? Well, we can't name the impact of it at this point. Um, we're saying, we're acknowledging that there are several lawsuits that we deal with, like any other county. But in management's opinion, that's you, that will not affect our financial condition of the county. Not if we win. And we don't, we can't say whether we're going to win or lose. So until then, no.
All right, so, um, we need corrections. Bring it back after corrections are made to the financial report.
You'll have it next week?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Give it back.
So do you need the votes to handle what's next?
No, we're just, let the minutes reflect that we requested the treasurer to make corrections to the financial report and to bring it back to the board for, for consideration.
Okay.
Thank you. Resolution 2018-149, the 2019, um, knowledge deal. I don't, this doesn't really need to be a resolution. We just need to acknowledge it because we follow the Oklahoma statute and the, um, IRS reimbursement rate that has gone from 54.5 cents to 58 cents effective January 1st. So, um, we can just acknowledge that we are following the Oklahoma statute. Would you please advise all the officers if the change effective January 1st?
Excuse me. I would make a motion that we revoke, uh, Barbara Bush as requisition officer for Medford ambulance service and Medford fire department.
One second.
Yes, moves by seconds to revoke the requisition officer Barbara Bush for Medford ambulance service and Medford fire department. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Wrong, or aye? I know I do that. Have.
Aye.
All ayes, motion very unanimous. Designation of requisition officer for medical ambulance service and Medford fire department. Lisa Sturler and Samantha.
I think it's Green.
Green. I would, I would make that a motion. I would make that a motion, go up 20 to you.
Second, yes, move by executive to approve the designated requisition officer of Medford ambulance and fire department, Lisa Sturler and Samantha Brinster. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. This one, you guys, this is an emergency transportation thing, but I don't think that Stephen has signed off on yet.
Oh, we talked to him on the phone, Max.
I'm sure we did.
I thought we never did this.
You've already.
Well, the numbers were wrong.
This is, this is the application form where you're asked to put ETR funds. The other one was an agreement. This is the actual, this is the second. I don't think we signed that one. You signed the agreement, didn't we?
Right.
We didn't sign the application. We signed the agreement. This is the application, right?
Well.
This, this says revise application.
The application had the wrong amount.
But it was a document, an agreement in, in word form, remember? It wasn't, it didn't look like that one, that the one that had.
I thought it was.
Because at the bottom, on the bottom of that page over here, down here on the corner, you marked the different amount on it and.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Do you remember?
I saw, I saw the numbers changed on one, but.
But I think, um, I think we need to sign that one, right?
I do. I think we need to sign it. And it's got the correct amount on there.
Okay.
I would make a motion to sign the ETR, uh, application, emergency transportation revolving fund application for District 1 for the Clyde Road.
One second.
One second.
Test move by second to approve the revised application to ETR fund for District One, Clyde Road project, ETR CR eight dash two seven dash one thirty-two, the whole nineteen, um, in the amount of, what is the amount, Max?
It's one million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, zero six two point zero zero.
One million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, sixty-two dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
Mindy, here's another requisition. Yep, you are.
Okay, this is the service contract issued under the state Oklahoma automatic, this is that comment out for fuel cards and. We approved the contract nine-ten at twenty-eight, we moved on up the contract. This is the actual contract they sent back to us, but Stephen has not signed off on it yet, so I think we better wait, yeah.
Yeah, on table.
Yes, okay. We will send it, uh, we're still waiting, it's been with Stephen since the first of the month.
Yes.
Send it back and see, maybe if we can remind him, send back to Stephen, yeah, for consideration, okay. Item L, Grant County Health Department maintenance contract.
This is, and I'm not sure he signed off on that one either, okay?
Just submitted November thirtieth. Maybe it's not signed off on.
Aye. She did that.
Send that back to Stephen, he's being, uh, he was on that for consideration, okay. Well, fire department, item M, change order number eight, eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
And it's been okayed by the two chiefs. Uh, but there again, I think it was one of the three things Cindy told me, she didn't, it hadn't been signed by him yet.
By Stephen or by the fire department?
By fire department.
It hasn't been signed off by the fire department. It says, it says here, um, they've, uh, this is from Henry Hodges, they have a check, the change order, what it's for, um, they've referred it to Mr. McKee and to us, but it needs, will also need an approval from the fire department representatives and they have not signed off on it, so.
And we.
They gave us, but not.
Yeah, we've got to have signatures on that, so send that to the fire department for approval.
Okay.
Busy, uh, next week's agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, shell contracts are physically.
Okay, this is, this is all of them and they've been put together with the original, they signed it, Stephen signed mostly on the back one, except for the ones from Mrs. Smothers, which is on top.
So let's see what we've got here. We have. So we have Doug and Ashley.
Yeah.
Steven Baker and Stephen signed off on two pages and they signed off on a different page, so technically all of those are, are, are signed. I wonder if we could get him to sign off on the pages, since he signed them, if we could get him to sign off on the same page.
Well, I think she called the auditor and told him what happened and how long it would take him to get stuff back for him, and she said as long as we have the one he signed with.
With the one we've got, there's Randy Miller, so we've got all those signed. This one is Dean Levita's. We got those signed. Do you have two originals, Max, or just one?
I have two.
Two from.
Well, I have two, but.
Yeah, they really have one, yeah, that's us, so that's on all of these, so we'll have to give, we'll have to execute them copies instead of originals. And then here's Clover's, the same one on it, so we've got those executed. And then Mabel's, he, I just got this back last week, so he hadn't, he hadn't signed.
I'm going to have him sign both of them, the one Stephen signed and I'm signing, I want to get that, we have to sign two, so.
So let's see, so we have, we can do one, two, three, and four, because we have all the required signatures from everybody on those. And five, we need Stephen's signature on that one, we've got Mabel's, we don't have his, so let's have a motion on one, two, three, and four.
I would make a motion that we approve, uh, contracts one, two, three, and four. One second.
Test move by second to approve, uh, contracts one with Phil Cen of Clover Revocable Trust, the Deany, uh, Bernie Dean Levita, with Randy Miller and Doug Seeley and Ashley Baker, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. So we better sign like all the pages, even the ones he signed off on, right?
Yes, that's what I, I think we better do.
Yeah, I think we're right. And this one, if you could send that up to Stephen and have him sign these two originals, those are the only two that need to send these to Stephen, this is just about the paperwork, don't confuse him.
Okay.
It's even an easy meeting today.
Yeah.
Usually have them just walk this far. Sometimes we go two through, two or three, Ken, so, no. All righty, and item five, Mabel Smothers, please send that one up to, uh, to the April Revocable. Road costing permits, do we have any of those?
I don't believe so.
New business, I don't think we have any new business.
I don't believe we have any new business.
Max, do you know any new business?
No.
Do you know any new business? I don't know business, um, commissioner comments, uh, Max, what do you have for today?
Okay, um, well, of course, after the holidays, we'll get back to, get back to work and, and things, but, uh, hope everybody had a good holiday and we're getting a little rain this morning, it not amounted to much yet, but I hope we get a little bit. Uh, last week, we had a little deal happen with District Three. Uh, I just wanted to clarify for everybody that, uh, I believe whenever, um, whenever you have a rock, a company that wants to give you rock, an oil company, I believe that it should be kept within its district and everything. I, I believe that they ought to have the first shot at it, and that's what had happened. Uh, Pat Rock had been offered some oil field pad rock and he turned it down and they called me, District One, and I went down with my road foreman, we looked at it and it was accepted. We, we said, yes, we would take it. And then last week, we had a little issue, District Three showed up with their trucks and my guys were hauling the rock off and it caused a little problem. And, and I agree, I think that Cindy or Dean, each one of us represents our district, we ought to get the rock, I think that we ought to too, though, if we don't take that rock and it goes on down to another, uh, commissioner or whatever, it's betterment of our county and stuff. And I just wanted to know, everybody to know that I wasn't trying to, to cut in on District Three's, uh, getting that rock or whatever. I just know that whenever they called me and told me that the rock was there and if I wanted it, I could have it, I'm going to take it to better, better my deal. And, you know, I, I know Dean who knew at that and everything else and stuff and I, when I found out later, if, if any, either one of you two have got a, an issue with something that I've done, I, I would appreciate you coming to me and asking me and finding out. Uh, my road foreman felt like that it kind of put him in a bad spot because we had already made the deal and everything and then found out. I just wanted that cleared for your guys and my guys' sake, everybody knew where we stood, okay?
Yeah, I'm good on that.
Okay, well, I, I would never, and I don't believe in it, that's why I wanted that stated upfront, that I believe that it ought to be our option. And when it wasn't accepted by the commissioner and it was passed on, then I felt like that it was betterment for our county and I wanted to keep that in accounting and that's a good thing for us and stuff. So, uh, I just wanted that clarified so your guys don't think that I'm trying to horn in on your business and, and my guys don't think I'm doing something that I shouldn't be doing, okay?
Well.
So, I just wanted that upfront and, uh, we are, we're grading and we're still mowing. Uh, I've gotten, uh, a request from, uh, a landowner to move some rock and I've got to talk to the district attorney about that. He's going to donate the rock to the county riffraff rock and stuff, and I need to visit for Stephen about that. And I'll probably draw up a little contract before we, uh, proceed with that, if Stephen's okay with that, and that'll be in the future. Outside of that, that's about all I have.
You have anything you want to add?
Uh, well, like I said, it was the holidays, I'm about, got about four or five guys working and that's it, and we're, uh, moving rock as we can and, uh, in response to Max's, uh, statement, uh, I was let under the impression, I was told that we had it. Uh, I don't know why I was told one thing and him and Max the other, but, uh, that's the way it was and Max and I worked out our agreement and I appreciate it and thank you, Max, I want that stated, I do. Uh, but I was told that we were, we had it, all I had to do was go look at it and let him know and he's, and then I come back around and found that, uh, he had said no to the oil company and, um, that being said, um, I contacted Max and we discussed everything and we worked it out. And I appreciate what Max did, he, he said, we kind of split two, uh, two locations and, and that has helped us have a lot. We're continuing to grade and, uh, work around bridges. I'd say that's about, about all we got here.
Okay.
I have a whole crew of two.
Wow, you're old, I don't feel so bad, man.
Yeah, we have a crew of two till probably till after the first of the year, so, and with it raining like, uh, this, so pretty much, uh, not much going on, we're, we're, it, good enough, we can still get out and mow, so we're doing a little mowing still today, trying to do that, catching up on that kind of stuff. January, uh, January's going to be busy, we've got a lot of projects we're going to be working on and doing and different things going on. Um, last week, we'd had our weed, uh, Weed Heart Nutrition Board meeting, um, uh, got Weed Heart, Weedland financial stuff going on, um, and next week, uh, Mindy, do you know if we're having that educational authority meeting?
Uh, it looks like you are because it looks like everybody on her, her emails has said yes.
Said yes, they could be here, okay. Okay, I'm going to probably pop in very briefly and I've got to be in Oklahoma City for my Oklahoma ODOT driving.
What day is that?
That's Thursday, I think that was the next up, that's Thursday. We usually have that eleven o'clock on the same day we have our board meetings.
Yes.
So I think we got that mixed up, I think it was supposed to be eleven o'clock on Wednesday the second, but as it is, we'll have our board meeting on Wednesday at nine and then we'll have that meeting on the eleventh. So, um, anyway, busy time, so.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I've got.
I do need, may I make an addition, I have been contacted about, uh, a building that is being tore down on a landowner's, um, land and it was offered to us, we needed to use it, and I said I would accept it, uh, he was going to clean it up and, and pile it and then we would haul it out.
I suggest you talk to Stephen before you do that.
That's, yeah, I will do that.
Okay. Because that's private, private land and it's not a non-pulpit or a school or something like that, so you better talk to Stephen on that.
And if it can benefit, like, the riffraff off of this project, because it's going to benefit me from having to not purchase that, then I can use that as a.
It's going to offset the cost.
Offset the cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's basically what's going here, he said he'd knock it down, clean it up, and all we had to do was haul it off. Other, other than taking it down and throwing it in the river where there wasn't enough room, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll talk to Stephen about that.
Okay.
That's that, we are on item ten.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I second.
Test move by second to adjourn at, uh, ten oh five, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All ayes, motion carried, we are officially adjourned, thank you. Let's see, did he give you back the original financial report for next week?
Sure.
Uh, did he give you that good original?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And do you need a copy? Have you received a copy of that yet?
No, I have not.
Can you make him a copy?
Yeah, yeah, I have one.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not giving it to you.
And you need to shut that, shut that off, yeah.